Good evening, welcome to the February 14th, 2023 City Council Meeting and happy Valentine's Day to everyone out there. Roll call please.
Mayor what?
Here.
Mayor Fortunlando?
Excused.
Councilmember Lucero?
Here.
Councilmember Solodan?
Here.
Council, I need approval of the agenda as revised.
I'll move approval of the revised agenda.
I'll second.
Special presentation, Black History Month, I have a request that Councilmember Lucero would like to read it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just thought I'd like to read this. I happen to have been a member of the Michigan Black Caucus of Local Elected Officials since 2002. The City of Hazel Park, a resolution proclaiming Black History Month. Whereas during Black History Month, we celebrate the many achievements and contributions made by African Americans to our economic, cultural, spiritual, and political development. And whereas Black History Month grew out of the establishment in 1926 of Negro History Week by Carter G. Woodson and the Association for the Study of African American Life and History. And whereas the observance of Black History Month calls our attention to the continued need to battle racism and build a society that lives up to its democratic ideals. And whereas, the City of Hazel Park continues to work toward becoming an inclusive community in which all citizens, past, present, and future, are respected and recognized for their contributions and potential contributions to our community, the state, the country, and the world. And the City of Hazel Park is proud to honor the history and contributions of African Americans in our community throughout our state and nation. So now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Hazel Park does hereby proclaim February 2023 to be Black History Month, as we encourage all citizens to celebrate our diverse heritage and culture and continue our efforts to create a world that is more just, peaceful, and prosperous for all.
Thank you. Takes us to the civic announcements. Anyone from the public have any civic announcements? Come up, Chris Lamek.
Hello, it's me, Chris Lamek, 23819 Hazelwood in Hazel Park. I have three things. First one is for the Neighborhood Enrichment Team. We're going to have a fundraiser, so this is a save the date for April 21st. We're going to have a taco bar at the Rex Center, and we're going to raise money to hopefully work with the city to put some hazelnut bushes in some of the parks. So that's what we're, our goal is at the moment. Also, I'd like to thank Brian, who's doing the video tonight, but he came over to Baldwin House and saw the residents, some of the residents of Hazel Park having a great time at the Valentine's Day dance. And we voted king and queen, and we just had a good time there, and he was there to video it for us. It was wonderful. Then the last thing is Oakland Press is having their best of the best. And I think it is something, as a resident of Hazel Park, I've already gone in, of course, of course I've put Baldwin House as the senior living place, but I think we should all go in there and put all Hazel Park businesses. We have some really good businesses. A lot of the categories hit Hazel Park. We only have two more days, but you can vote one day, so that's two more times. And I've already been voting for people in Hazel Park and for our businesses. So I think that's something you should do. You go to the Oakland, Oakland Press website, and you can vote for, just, there's a whole bunch of things that you can vote for. And I think we need to go and do that for Hazel Park. And that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. We have Commissioner McGilvery here. It's an honor to have you here this evening. Welcome County Commissioner McGilvery.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I just wanted to introduce myself. All of you up here know me, but I'm the county commissioner now in Hazel Park. I've been involved for a long, long time. I've served as a councilman and mayor in Madison Heights for 25 years. And then I moved to the county, and currently the committees I sit on right now are chairman of the Lago Committee, which is Legislative Affairs and Government Operations. Also sit on Public Health and Safety. And my passion is parks, as a lot of you know. So I'm chairman of the Oakland County Parks Commission. We're pleased to be able to help Hazel Park, and we're looking forward to it. It's in the planning process right now, so give us a little bit of time. We got $15 million to be able to do some things in several parks. We'll be opening five new parks in Oakland County. We tried to get as many as we could in the South End, so there'll be a new one in Southfield. We'll be doing some work here in Hazel Park. Madison Heights is, we're taking over Ambassador Park, which is up on 13 Mile. That'll be themed as a senior park with pickleball courts and that kind of thing. So I look forward to serving Hazel Park. And Ed's got my number, so if any of you want to call me, feel free.
Give your number out to the public now.
It is 248-709-0359.
Thank you, sir.
And, Mr. Mayor, oh, go ahead.
I was going to say Gary knows I have his number because I called him and berated him about coming to our meetings.
We're sorry, Gary.
I was like, listen, we need to see your face.
My pleasure. I'll try to attend as many as I can, but I cover three cities and plus all the company meetings.
Well, I want everybody to know at home, and Serene can talk a little bit more about this during comments from department heads, but Commissioner McGilvery has been very instrumental in the City of Hazel Park receiving some grants for our Recreation Department and Green Acres Park to upgrade those facilities over there. And those upgrades will be in process this year, and you'll see this over this year and the next. The influence that Commissioner McGilvery has had to bring these things to Hazel Park. So we're very pleased to have him representing us, and we're very fortunate that he is as senior member as he is and as influential, and that his passion is parks, because we have some great parks here. We have some great parks that need some upgrades. And we're starting to get those, thanks to his influence at the county. So thank you, sir.
My pleasure. My pleasure.
Thank you.
Thanks, Gary.
Thanks.
Appreciate it. Any other civic announcements from the public? Like to come up? Civic announcements from the City Council?
I did want to talk about the Hazel Park Historical Museum is having a Black Histories, Black Futures, Ask All, Ask All Questions event. It was originally scheduled for this weekend, but they had to reschedule it, so that date is to be determined at this point. I don't have it at this meeting currently. But keep an eye out on their page. I've also shared it, and you can find that information. Honestly, if you wanted to email them, you could even ask that. But just, you can call the city too and ask if you are looking to attend. And it's going to be featuring one of our black business owners here in Hazel Park, talking about how he is building his future here in our city.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to thank the Hazel Park firefighters, local 1414 for putting on their annual charity bowl-a-thon over the weekend on Saturday. It was an extremely well-attended event. We had fantastic participation from city employees across every department. The lanes were packed, and it was a great event. And I'm so pleased with the level of support that we got from our city employees and the community at large.
Yes, it was. Thank you. I'd like to move on to public discussion. I'd like to open up to public. Any comments at all from the public? Seeing none, we'll go move it on to the consent agenda, one through six. Council, what would be your pleasure?
Make a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented, items one through six.
Support.
Dissension, discussion. I would like to ask and see if the business license for 1519 East Nine Mile Motor City Mushroom here, any applicant, please come up.
If you want to come up, this is your chance to do
Did your advertisement?
An advertisement for your business.
How you doing?
Good evening. Doing great. Nice to be here.
Tell us when you're open, your hours.
Well, we just finished getting the approvals, so we're still working on getting all the remodeling finished up and the equipment set up. But this is not like an open, public building. We'll be doing more of like wholesaling to restaurants and selling online, e-commerce. We will be moving into the consumer portion of that in a few months. You can purchase any of our products online at motorcitymushroom.com.
Okay. And what your name is?
Anthony.
Anthony, nice to have you to the city, Anthony.
Thank you, Anthony. Welcome to Hazel Park.
Welcome, Anthony.
And is there anyone from here from 24057? I'm sorry, did you still want to say something else? 24057 Dequinter, Nail Elite, anyone here from that business? And another one, 21938, John R., Black Dog Furniture and Mattress. Got to say, this new business is across the street from my business, and they are doing, is a young couple, making it on their own, open retail in this economy, and they're doing well. And I think that they should thrive. And they're going to do the best they can, and I, best of luck for them. Any other questions on the consent agenda from council? If not, motion has passed. Mr. Dray reports.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the administration respectfully requests approval of the addresses to be included in the Neighborhood Enterprise Zone. Remember, the City Council passed the Neighborhood Enterprise Zones and identified the zones in February of 2020. And tonight, we are identifying the specific addresses in that zone, which are 501 East Mir, 110 West George, 541 East Hayes, 500 East Prenard, and 92 West Mir. The administration respectfully requests approval.
I'll move approval of the, I guess, reapproving the Neighborhood Enterprise Zone.
I will second with just a slight clarification for people. These are, this applies to areas that we had already pre-designated, and also, these are all new builds. And this is going to be the same Neighborhood Enterprise Zone rate as we did for the new development of the condos on Woodbird Heights.
Motion passes. Any dissension? None? Any more discussion? Okay. Moves us to Boards and Commissions, annual appointments to Board of Review.
Mr. Mayor, the administration respectfully requests the reappointment of Gary Harrison, Julie Andrewjeski, and Ron Nagy to the Board of Review. This is a grueling board that spends a lot of time in City Hall, and we really appreciate the service of these three members being willing to undertake this time commitment.
Okay. Motion and appointment is done. Accept that. Appointments to Historical Commission?
Mr. Mayor, per our agreement with the schools, they are allowed to appoint members. The schools have requested that Melissa Baldwin be appointed the member, and Dawn Rice as the alternate to the Historical Commission.
So move. Appointments to DDA?
Mr. Mayor, I'm requesting that I be reappointed to the Downtown Development Authority and that Mr. Kurt Gore be appointed to the Downtown Development Authority.
Sure. Okay. So we'll move on that one as well.
Do we need an official motion on those?
No, we don't.
Okay.
Now, it takes us to the old business, seeing none, the new business from council. They want to bring up any comments about anything new business to the city?
After the last meeting, I asked Ed if we could develop a committee to go over the language, a charter language committee, to kind of update some of the ambiguous language. And I just wanted to formally make that request on the record.
We'll look at that again. Is, and I want to be sensitive, and I want to get this done, and it's a large undertaking. But right now, we're doing the zoning ordinance, and we can probably take a look at that after we finish.
Sure.
That. Because I just, I don't want to overpromise and nod my head to you and say, oh, yeah, we're going to do this. And then six months later, you say, Ed, well, where is it?
Six months later, I'm going to be like, Ed, just a reminder.
We're having, you know, it's great that there are these new resources out there for cities, but we're having like a capacity issue managing the stuff. So, and that's good. It's good that we're getting grants, and it's good that we're getting all of these things. And I'm grateful. Trust me, we, it was 20 years where we really didn't get much of anything from anyone. So we're pleased to be able to bring a lot of new things, but it's, it's creating, you know, it's creating a capacity issue. So absolutely, and we will take a look at that, and we can put that together for you. It's, we know it's coming. I just, give me a few months.
No worries.
All right.
That's it.
And communications from department heads. I don't know why so many of you are here and could be enjoying Valentine's Day with a significant other.
Because my department heads are committed to making sure the residents of Hazel Park receive service in this community second to none. So, so, thank you.
You got one applause there, right? I thought you wanted to be somewhere else. So, thank you for coming out. Anyone who wants to speak?
Yes, they, a few of them are going to speak tonight.
Evening, Mayor. Just want to announce, we'll be starting the next tree program section. There'll be section nine on our map. That's Woodruff to Pearl, Dequinter to Russell. Flyers went out this week, and our contractors will be out maybe as soon as this weekend. They go out, they look at each tree. Ideally, we want to trim the trees, and then if they see that a tree might need to come down, I'll take a look at it, and we notify the resident there, and we go from there. Followed up in April will be our sidewalk program. April, May will be in the previous section, and then go on from there. So just letting you know, that's starting to happen since winter's been good to us so far. So, thank you.
Tom, I see there's compost out there at the
Yes, and that was another thing with a light, mild winter. Sacra asked if we wanted a truckload of compost. So we do have compost at Kennedy Park. That's 1800 East Roberts. So there is a load of that there for anybody that has some winter farming to do.
Looks like it's time to start spring cleanup in the yard.
Yeah. That's another question. If the weather is better than, as good as this or better, should we have the roughage pick up in March instead of April?
That's something we'll look at. Another thing we've done in the past is if it looks like it's mild and we don't have the trucks in motion for curbside, we've gotten dumpsters at the DPW in the past that people can start bringing stuff in. Sacra does offer that also, but that's at 14 and a half in Coolidge, so not that convenient for us. So we'll keep an eye on that, and that might be something we did. Last year, I believe we were a week or two early.
Yeah, can I look that way this year?
Yeah, so we'll be looking at that.
I think it's going to turn green before we know it.
Yeah.
Thank God. Anyways.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
Any other department heads want to come up?
Serene Papaki, Recreation Director.
Hello, good evening.
Good evening. Serene.
It's good to see all of you. Thanks for having me. I wanted to talk today about the $200,000 grant we received from the Oakland County Board of Commissioners. Thank you so much, Commissioner Gary McGilvery. We are so thankful for the extension of what seems to be a lot of resources from the county. So thank you so much. I just wanted to explain really what that money entails. That includes capital improvements for $200,000 for our senior center slash community center. These are one in the same building. They have both titles because seniors congregate in our community center. So specifically, the grant money goes towards a new HVAC system, new flooring, new plumbing, ADA compliant doors, which are really important in a community center and when serving seniors, and a new electrical system that goes side by side with the new HVAC system. It does not specifically go towards senior services, but I did want to explain exactly what we do currently after COVID regarding senior services. The first item I would like to speak to is our Smart Transportation Program that we do in partnership with Smart. This goes Monday through Thursday, 8:30 to 3:00. We take anyone of any ability, and specifically those seniors who are 60 years of age or older. And we do allow for wheelchair accessibility. And this program is at low cost, $3 round trip. It's vital, and I'm very thankful to see our residents using the program. It's very nice to see. And that has gone on through COVID without, without skipping a beat. In addition, we do senior cards. That is on Monday and Thursdays from 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM. They like to play pinochle. These are the Hazel Park seniors. In addition, we house the Ferndale senior citizens, and we have for over a year and a half now. That is because the Coolick Center became not a place that they could meet. So without hesitation, we allowed the Ferndale senior citizens to congregate in our community center. We love them so much. We invite Hazel Park senior citizens, and we hope together they form their own group, and that's what we're really trying for. They come every second and fourth Wednesday of the month, and that's been happening for a year and a half now. Beyond that, we act as the Recreation Department, as advocates for senior citizens in terms of allowing, or finding resources for them, which seem to be diminishing at large, I would say, beyond just the city, not our services. I would just say, at large, the regional partners. And that's a different topic. But, so, yes, at this time, we are very thankful to the Oakland County Board of Commissioners, Parks and Recreation Board of Commissioners, to help us out with funding. This is critical capital improvement funding. I don't think the community center has seen real, real funding outside of the CARES Act like that since the origination of the building. So this is vital, critical needs.
It's older than me.
Yeah, it's, I think, to date, it's 1955, the community center slash senior center. To make sure everyone knows, those are the same building, that is the same building. And grant money is not taxpayer dollars. This did not cost any taxpayer dollars to this city, yeah, to the city of Hazel Park. It's just a refresher to remember that grants are free money coming in. Of course, I'm going to apply for it, and I'm very thankful, again, that we received the money.
Awesome.
One question.
Sure.
I've had a few requests when we had the first couple of snowfalls. A few seniors asked, how do we get our snow taken care of?
Yes.
What is the request specifically? How we are, how are we handling?
Sure. So what we do specifically as a city municipal department is we refer them to regional partners in the area. I wish I could paint a better picture of what that looks like. It's not a pretty picture. There's not many resources. Oakland County defined this as one of, if not, I think, the number one issue in their senior, I don't remember what they call it, but essentially a master plan of senior services. So the, the volunteerism has gone down. This is
It's one of the biggest questions.
I agree. It's
Yeah, they, if I may jump in, when Serena and I met with Oakland County, and they did identify, this is Serena said, is one of the biggest problems, that the partner providers that we have, different nonprofit organizations and things like that, they're finding it very hard to recruit personnel to volunteer and to work even in paid positions for them. So it's, it's impacting their ability to provide assistance and service to
Let me ask a question here. Maybe the county can fund a part-time employee for us, and we fund the other part-time, and we have a list of certain houses that we go out and clear through our DPW. They have to be vetted out accordingly.
It'd probably be better to contract that out to a series of snow shovelers who might be interested in that.
That's the problem that doesn't work.
Ray Look has a chores program that allows seniors to hire specific contractors that co-work with the city for a lower rate, which I think would be probably an easier option for a city like us.
I think that we're, we need to kind of focus a little more towards the seniors instead of just having them to rely on some contractor out of the blue.
Well, again,
Because it just apparently hasn't worked for the last decade or two, so
It's, and it's not
I think a better idea for the seniors that aren't able to get out or fend for themselves, and they're, they're kind of convalescent in their homes.
Yep. That's, we'll talk with Oakland County again, and we'll see what we can come up with in terms of special solutions.
See if we can get a little free, free funding here to help out with the seniors, actually target the seniors for what they really need.
Sure. I totally agree with you, Mayor. The need is great.
Been going on for, this question comes across my desk almost every year.
Yeah. And just to reiterate, from my department, we have three people who works, work in parks and recreation, so this is not feasible simply from the city department. However, the need continues, and the county has identified it as the number one issue.
Keep pushing the ball down the road.
Yeah.
Absolutely. And continue to find resources and try to connect people to those resources.
And we get elected to fix these things, and we can't still not fix them, sir.
We work every day hard to fix.
We can find every place to do this.
We, in the past, what we did was, we worked with
Contractors, yeah.
Park School District, and remember, Sutar gave them some money, bought them snow shovels and winter coats and gloves and things like that.
And talking so more consistently.
And we had a great thing, and they did, they did a great job for a couple
Seniors fret over the silliest things. They get, they get upset very easily, and we all have parents, older parents, we've all cared for, or, you know, are caring for, and it takes a toll on their system to worry.
We'll, we'll see what we can come up with, but it's not, as Serena said, this is not for lack of trying. It's not an easy solution.
It's very frustrating to me as well. I share the same.
Come back with, let's come back with some ideas.
Sure.
Maybe at a work study, you can bring it up, what's how we can maybe sort through this for next year.
Sure thing.
Did you want to talk a little bit about youth sports at all, or?
Sorry.
I'll talk, I'll just, I'll give the update. Serena and I had a meeting today with representatives of the school district. Just to keep you guys updated, remember, we're working on that joint initiative for funding youth sports here in the City of Hazel Park. Obviously, we have a little bit of settlement money, so we're bringing some money to the table. And the schools are trying to find some. And what we're trying to do is work cooperatively to ensure that we have our own youth sports programs here in Hazel Park. And we're going to concentrate on, you know, the obvious ones, but we're also looking at some other things as well, beyond competitive sports, also things like wellness and maybe some arts and cultural things, too. So we want to improve those ties to the city and the schools to make sure that we're able to provide more diverse services to our younger residents. And like I said, we think the youth sports initiative will pay dividends for both the youth in our community and the Hazel Park schools, because if they can participate in Hazel Park youth sports, they will more likely continue to attend Hazel Park schools with their peers, and it will help us synergistically help the community and the school district.
And just to add to that, any partnership that our department engages in is always prosperous. That's how we survive as Parks and Recreation. That's how we survive as Senior Services, is by engaging these partnerships and to be involved with the Hazel Park School District even more intimately than we have previously. This is a win for the community.
Good stuff.
Thank you.
Can I, can I ask real quick, before Gary gets up and tells us amazing things? I see him excited. The, the round trip Smart Bus, how do seniors schedule that?
Sure. So we prefer two days in advance. All you have to do is call our department, and they can even fill out the paperwork on their end and just hand it to our drivers. So as soon as they call within, pretty much two days within our schedule, as long as we have availability and our drivers are working, which they normally are, then we can handle a ride. And this includes those who need a wheelchair lift, any, any curb-to-curb ride.
What's the phone number they would call?
That would be 248-547-5535.
And then one other question.
Sure.
Seniors group, you said they meet the second and the fourth Wednesday. Are there specific hours that they meet if people are looking, I try to advertise their stuff, too, because I know people are, teens and, teens and seniors are what people keep asking us for. are what people keep asking us for. So I love that you're focusing on that. And I'm really glad that you're here highlighting it.
Sure. The Ferndale group specifically meets on the second and fourth Wednesday of the month at 10:00 AM.
And they are actively looking for Hazel Park members to join them. And that is a very active senior group that does a diverse amount of activities, trips, wellness things, educational opportunities that provide information to seniors about everything from health and wellness to taxes. It's just, it's.
We're thankful to have them, honestly.
Yeah, we're really lucky. Like, I hate that their Kulik Center is, you know, discombobulated to be nice. But I'm glad that they're in our community and giving some opportunities to our seniors.
I am as well. They're so inviting. And they've been nothing but good guests, let's say, but not really, we don't treat them like guests, but, you know, from our neighboring city.
They're family now.
Yes.
Love it, love it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Gary McGilvery, I think, wanted to speak. He's going to come up here and he's got a solution for our neighbors. He's got a solution for our senior snow shoveling problem right now.
I'm working on it. For the last year, I've been serving on the Senior Ad-Hoc Committee out of the county. And along with area aging. And we're the ones that came up with all the things that seniors need that they don't have. I, I pointed out that, nothing against veterans. I appreciate every single one of them. But we've got a veterans department with 17 employees. We had no senior person that deals with senior citizens. So we now have a new direct chief of senior services. It's our former state representative, Jim Ellison. He just started a couple, a month ago.
That's him.
And along with, I, I told the county executive that I would vote against the budget, which he doesn't like to see unless there was some money in there for that position. And so they have $500,000 to start. So, we're working on building a seniors department. We have a senior citizen advisory committee. In fact, I'm looking for someone from my district to serve on that committee. So if we know of any seniors that would like to serve on it, I'd love to nominate them. But we're, we're working towards some kind of a solution. Because now that I am a senior citizen and need a snow shoveler, I can't find one either. So.
Say nothing, Gary.
Yeah.
Right.
Thank you.
If somebody was looking to apply for that senior advisory, how would, would they just contact your office?
They can contact Ed and give Ed the number.
Awesome.
And Ed will pass it on to me.
Perfect. Thank you.
Any other department heads wishing to come up? Don't all jump at once.
Don't.
Okay, takes us to the city attorney, Mr. Schwartz.
Happy Valentine's Day, everybody.
Thank you. And happy Valentine's Day to you too. I thought I saw another city attorney here. She, want to get up and say anything?
Happy Valentine's.
All right. Thank you. City manager?
Yeah, first of all, I want to extend, you know, deepest sympathies from the city of Hazel Park to the Michigan State University family in the wake of that horrific tragedy that occurred there last night. Hazel Park stands with MSU today. Getting back to city government, we've had some meetings. I was in Lansing as part of the legislative committee with the Michigan Municipal League focusing on municipal finance. And of course, we all know Michigan system of municipal finance is fundamentally broken. So there are some proposals that are hopefully going to go into the hopper. And Hazel Park will probably try to play a leading role in this. That'll be introduced in Lansing to fix some of the problems with the interaction between Headley and Prop A. We're looking at an increase in revenue sharing this year, which will be a nice one-time bump. But they're also looking at something that would be truly revolutionary if they can pull it off. And that is like a revenue sharing rainy day fund. So we will never be in a position again like we were under the Engler and Granholm administrations when it was simply a raid of our revenue sharing dollars every single year when they couldn't balance the budget. They simply balanced it on the backs of cities and kind of their attitude was, oh, that's, we're, we're sorry.
Oh, well. Well, wait, wait. Their, their attitude was worse.
No, their attitude was.
They took the money from us and said, you don't know how to run yourself efficiently.
That is correct.
That's exactly.
That's absolutely correct, Andy. And the solutions that they had, and it was, you know, both parties were uniquely horrible during that whole period of dark days for the state of Michigan. And again, it was bad. So there's a, hopefully, a new recognition in Lansing that revenue sharing isn't some gift. It's not a grant like these wonderful grants that we're able to get from the county and the state and the federal government recently. This is a, it's an integral part of how Michigan cities are funded and how we pay our bills. And when they took that money away from us, they eviscerated us. And Mike and Andy, Ben, they, you guys have been here as long as I have.
We've been through a lot of it.
And we saw every year where our property values are plummeting and we have nothing from our tax base. Our tax base was literally cut in half. At the same time, our tax base was cut in half, we saw these drastic cuts to state revenue sharing. It was really dark times for municipal governments in Michigan. It was the worst of any state in the entire United States during that timeframe. So I'm glad to see there are some, at least we're starting to hear some optimism. There's been nothing that's done yet. There was one great thing that was done last year on a bipartisan basis, and that was pension fund assistance. And every taxpayer in Hazel Park should be happy that that was an issue taken up by the legislature, because that could have easily turned into a special assessment that we'd have no choice on. So I'm very pleased that they were able to do that. And we hope that this momentum will carry forward into real substantive changes for positive things in the future. And obviously, in Hazel Park, we're going to be playing an important role in that. Our new state representative, Mike McFall, is committed to these issues as well. I spent a long time on the phone with him today. And like I said, I'm, I'm hopeful. And I'll keep you guys informed as I learn more. And we'll keep the residents informed. Thank you. And happy Valentine's Day, Diane.
Councilperson Sullivan?
I haven't talked enough already.
I know you're just.
I got notes.
Ready to jump there.
I've got notes over here. I want to thank everybody that came out today. I want to thank our department heads and definitely Serena for giving us that update. Because I had a bunch of people asking me and I'm like, listen, I didn't write the grant, so I don't know specifically. But it's great to hear the, the seniors are getting some services and getting more access, more accessible spaces in our community center, safer spaces in our community center. That benefits all of us. So, super excited about that. I am going to be harassing Jim Ellison. I'm excited to hear that he's, I walk a dog right past his house three days a week, so I see his wife often. I also wanted to talk about the terrible mass shooting at MSU last night. I want to encourage our legislators to really, I'm hearing down the pipeline that red flag laws are coming to our state, which can help remove weapons from people that are deemed unsafe to own weapons or have weapons, specifically with regards to domestic violence victims. Because of that federal judge ruling that removed that, removed that ability for people who are convicted of domestic assault to have their guns removed, their weapons taken away. I think red flag, red flag laws are super important to our community and to our state and to the safety of our state. I also want to remind people, and I just verified with our chief, there are always free gun locks available at our police department. If you have a gun, it is your responsibility to keep it safe, to keep it locked up, and to keep it out of the hands of people that should not be having access to it. I'm a gun owner myself. All of my guns have gun locks. It's super important. Be responsible. We hear a lot about responsible gun ownership and that's your first step. Also, taxes are coming. You'll see your tax assessment coming. I had to have a nice phone call with our tax assessment department here in Oakland County, because I had a, a large assessment. But because of.
Thank you for your home improvement. We're greatly appreciative of the.
You're very welcome for all my tax dollars.
That's our community.
The, what I was told and what I want to relay to people is you will see, you know, the Prop A Headley 5% over inflation. The inflation is so great this year that everybody should be, will probably be seeing that 5% tax rate raise. So don't be surprised. It's not at the city level that we're doing this. It's because of the way the Prop A Headley works and the way that inflation is affecting our taxes this year, our property taxes. That's it. I, I really want to remind people to look out for your loved ones and look, look out for people that you care about and check in on people that are struggling today. Because these events are traumatic and they affect everybody, even if you're not directly involved. That's it.
Councilman Lake Carroll?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Happy Valentine's Day to everyone. And thank you, Gary, County Commissioner McGilvery, for coming out. Hope to see you more often. It's good news. Thanks to everybody who came out Saturday for the firefighters bowling fundraiser. It was a lot of fun. It always is a lot of fun. It was, you know, hijacked by COVID for a couple of years, but it's back. And it's always a big turnout. On the happy Valentine's Day, I'll just finish. If you love somebody, tell them. If you have children, hug them every day and tell them you love them. Thanks for coming out.
Thank you. I want to say thank you for coming out tonight. And I believe that we all owe a moment of silence to those that have lost their lives at this college and to others that have struggled through the torment of the horrific sights and scenes throughout our state over the past few years that we've all had to deal with as students and kids in schools. So please take a moment. Thank you. Just a little calm sometimes helps settle the nerves. And seeing the TV advertisement, watching my show on TV last night and getting the breaking news, just, my heart dropped right out. And we're just like, I can't believe this. My heart goes out, the city Hazel Park goes out for those that are, those families in need. And we wish them the best. And our prayers are we with them. Thank you. The other thing I want to bring up tonight is our department heads are doing a wonderful job. And you can see that they're facilitating as well as they should. And then better some overachievers here, trying to do everything they can to provide the service for the community and the residents. And that's what our department heads do. They stand up and do what the job is necessary to perform so our city can move forward. Had a great time at the firemen's benefit. A lot of, a lot of employees were there. I liked to see all the departments were there representing. It was very nice. And I want to say thank you to everyone that did participate. And I also like to say thank you to my wife for many years and happy birthday.
Happy birthday, Robbie.
Happy Valentine's Day.
Happy Valentine's Day.
And I get hit twice. I've been married to her for 36 years. So it's, and before that, twice in, twice in one day. So it gets a little pricey sometimes. But she's worth every penny. But I do want to take a moment and also thank our administration for trying to make things happening, happen here in our city that continues to move our city forward. It's nice to see the new businesses and young couples start up a business in our community and take that chance. That's what it's all about, entrepreneurship. If we don't have that in our, in our country, we're not going to survive. A small, the spine of our country is a small, slow, sole proprietor businesses. And even if you, you know, the big corporations will be there right now, but how long are they going to be there? Sometimes you don't know. Take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Again.
Thank you.